But it's affecting me because of the noise ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
No need.
We'll try.
What we'll do is send you off to a selectmen or something.
Oh, okay. So what should I put?
Questions.
We have a, we have a public participation section, so.
That's where I thought I was gonna go.
Yeah.
So that's why I thought. I looked it up.
Did you?
I'm just, oh, yeah.
We don't get this good attendance in public hearing.
Yeah. Oh, I went through the research, yeah.
Be on yet, Jen?
That's not on, somebody wants to check it out. See if it's on there.
Looks like it's.
No, I've got all. Looks different.
Yeah, it does.
That's why I was like, hey.
Ready? We okay to start?
Yeah.
All right.
I make a motion.
Hey.
You know the routine, Dave. I make a motion, we start these proceedings.
Second.
All in favor? All right, as you all know, our chairman is out today, so.
What do you mean?
Vice chairman will be here tonight. She is ill. All right, looks like we had a full agenda tonight. We good, Jess? Everything good? All right.
Clock's working tonight.
I don't know, a little angry, but it's not.
That doesn't work anyway, does it? I keep watching. It's not going.
Last time I was here, it wasn't even there, so.
The clock?
Yeah.
It's fixed now, it has battery in it.
Oh, it's fixed?
It has a battery in it.
Oh.
All right, so. Opening? We're open. All right, we're gonna skip number two, the offices and new members where we don't have to say, oh, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Proceed without that, she asked away, which makes sense. All right, so we'll go right to number three, Harvey King. Site plan review for a twelve by twelve building for the sale of various artisan items and a small parking area. And we have the email right here. Should be first in your packets. For real quick, if you haven't already.
I actually didn't get a copy of that one.
Oh, you didn't get this one?
Is this here?
Yeah.
So that's it, okay.
It starts, you gotta start at the bottom and go to the top.
Oh, okay, that's why I was confused.
All right, so it's not human.
Looks like there's room. Have we told her that she needs to do a site plan review, or is that what the question is?
No, I don't know.
No, that's what we do.
Okay.
Harvey here, or?
No, he's not.
No, okay.
So then.
We can.
We'll have to wait.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
We can come up with questions after.
Yeah.
We really would have to take a look at it, wouldn't we? It looks like there's enough room by, by reading it, but.
There's gotta be enough setbacks. Which doesn't sound like that'd be an issue, depending where the planning put it.
Doesn't sound like any.
According to what I just read in the new ordinance, any new accessory structure required a site plan review.
Yeah, that's the way I read. We're gonna need it. To me, it's a.
And change the use of property too, right? Because of the fact that he's.
Is that a change? They're adding it because it's so residential.
Page four of the site plan ordinance, like we always do, applicable ability. We start right at C. Go down through the list. Construction replacement, new building or structure for a non-residential use. So we've met that. Uh, number two, the expansion of an existing non-residential building or structure, we're not there. Conversion of an existing building in whole or in part.
No.
The establishment of a new non-residential use, even if no buildings or structure are proposed. So we got a new non-residential use also.
Yeah.
So based on those two, it appears to me it would have to come to site plan review.
Sounds that way to me.
That's how it sounds that way.
Yeah.
So I guess we have to table it.
So, yeah. We should notify the other.
Yeah.
We'll probably have to do a.
These are have to run all of.
Yeah. We'll probably have to do a site walk. All right, so.
What's a nice time of year to go back to? Last time we went, I was freezing.
Better than some alternatives.
Okay.
All right. Joseph Whipple.
Oh, that one.
Yep. Is Joseph here?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Now we'll have some questions.
It's an existing building.
Yep. This kinda goes back to our home business.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the whole, like in-home daycare thing, I mean, it's not really.
So I have, I'm not clear yet on doing that. Does that count as a change of use? Because it's still residential? Or does it go to residential business?
Not really.
Now, where do you draw that line?
When you, I think we're gonna go from one business to another more than if we go from one room in our house and say, okay, we're repairing commute, computers in it, or doing sewing.
Yeah.
Now you're gonna be working out of your house, no.
Yes, sir.
No re.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah. And you're not, you don't feel you need any, any parking areas, you're just using.
Absolutely, now I got plenty of parking.
Yeah, so you're just using the existing driveway.
Yes, sir.
You see a lot of, I assume you're not gonna see a lot of traffic anyway.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Not, not for, you know, by that time I'll start a store in front of myself.
Yeah.
Sounds like drop off and pick up.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
So we're almost at the point where we are with our home daycares.
Yeah.
Where we've been.
Exactly.
With no change of structure or parking areas or driveways, we haven't. We've been looking at it as a no site plan review needed.
I don't think it does.
I don't think so.
You have any issues, David, or?
I don't think so either.
But I got the address, 'cause I think I need help.
I'm sorry.
Don't be headed off, I apologize.
No sign or anything, or are you?
In a small way.
And if you do, that's, that's a code issue.
Just, uh, probably a little yard sign or something, so it's easier to find the driveway.
That's a question of code anyway, right? If it's a business sign of any sort.
Yeah.
It's gonna be some humongous sign.
I think that's a, is there a ruling on the size of signs?
Yeah, there is a sign, it would be, it's right. We have a sign.
Small, and can't be lit up, and.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we have that, right?
Ah, yes.
Is that code? That's code.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's code, I don't think.
Yeah, and that falls under the address, Lebanon addressing, so that would be a code, a question of code. But outside that, I see no, no reason for this one for site plan review, does anybody else?
No.
I just.
All right, so maybe wanna make a motion then?
I make a motion that we just pass this along and doesn't need site plan review.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Perfect.
Well, I didn't worry about your sign.
Who do we call? How long heck or?
Touch base with you on that.
And Jen will give you a letter too, saying, you know, no site plan review required.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah.
Roll that along and make it through. If they were all that easy.
Easy, yeah. Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So, our next topic. Proposed oil and propane depot, Route 202. Michael here?
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I got a package here.
Okay.
Guess I got a homework.
They're all nine.
Oh, no.
He has more than we have in court, so.
Okay, you got a big one?
Okay. Yeah, we got codes, I'll need one for Kyle.
Oh, did you already get one?
I'll take one, I just gave it to Jen, so.
And then one for the file.
I have codes.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, we got one.
Thank you. And then there's one more, sir. Oh, for Sarah, right?
Yeah, our president will need one when she gets back, right? All right, everybody take a few minutes and look at this.
If we went down this road here, would we turn right or left on 202?
Right. Uh, sorry, the road right over here?
No, I mean, if we went over here, we'd go down.
To Center Road?
Well, we get, when we reach 202, would we go right or left?
If I look, uh, was it an Exxon station up there?
On 202 would be, if we got down to 202, off Central.
Off Central Street, yeah.
You go right.
I'm trying to picture.
Go to the back, there's a picture, you'll see where it is.
Oh, okay.
There's an auto place to cry, Eminem or something across.
Oh, right, right across from Eminem, okay. Find him where it is. Not to crap on my house, otherwise I was wondering.
Yeah. There's an existing tank sitting in there right now, isn't there?
It's sitting on the, yes, correct. Yeah. Yeah. And you can see from the pictures, we did a little bit of grading up there. The tanks would be relocated from another facility in Boston. We'll just drive down and set it on there.
Oh, I know exactly where it is.
So are you merging these into a single lot?
Well, apparently there was a plan to split, and my plan came in block four thing.
Okay.
That plane's on record, so it's.
So it's still on?
It's still one.
On the tax records, it's still?
Still, one piece of five point six one acres. Fact, now chosen as six.
'Cause I was gonna say, with those setbacks.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't know. The site plan is using the entire five point six one. Four hundred feet. Site plan is just the front.
Well, 'cause you're not doing anything.
Yeah, I'm not doing anything.
You have only eighteen up, eighteen inches up on your burn?
Yes.
Is this for the fire pond?
Yeah, no, that's just for.
Oh, that's.
Erosion control.
Erosion, okay, that's a pretty.
And silphins, yeah. The.
Okay, here we go, so this is. Oh, yeah, so you're, well, eight, ten feet deep on the pond?
Yes, we've got enough for forty-five thousand gallons. Plus, we made sure it was more than forty-five thousand. And a couple of feet above, I think, the top elevation of the pond, this will be three twelve.
Oh, yeah, drop it back down, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're anticipating that the water level is gonna be around three-ten.
Yeah. But your pond is around three-oh-four, so you got about eight feet of depth.
Yeah. I calculated it six times the water.
All right, does everybody head down the review?
I think so.
Yeah, you don't think?
Oh, I see.
Yes, my first question is, the shared driveway, do you have an agreement in place for them to?
It's actually on the survey, it's an easement that they use our lane to access.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess that answers that question.
Yeah, yeah, it's an easement for them, so we own, we own the driveway.
Okay.
Makes it a lot easier.
Yep.
Yeah. So you're saying in your letter, you won't need DOT approval for a driveway permit, or because?
We need DOT approval for change in use of the driveway.
Into why?
I said in, I said in the permit, in the letter, that I don't believe we need a traffic movement permit from DOT.
Okay.
It's not likely generating a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
Five hundred poles.
So no one, no one actually stays on this site?
No.
They just come in and they get their truck.
They come in, pick up the truck, and, and fill it up with whatever fuel they're delivering, and off they go, and then they come back and pick another over.
So there's no port bodies or anything?
There'll be a port of body.
There'll be a port of body.
There'll be a port of body.
That I did see, I did see that question was answered.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
Yep, I tried to.
I don't see plumbing, you're.
Well, no, I don't do any plumbing. Know well, again, 'cause again, the intent is that the staff will.
Yeah. And I will tell you, this is something new, we've never seen, or definitely. This definitely falls under our site plan review.
That's what we understand, that's what.
Which will, then this will definitely require a site visit for us.
Yeah.
This isn't anything we're gonna be approving tonight. And we're also gonna need, we're gonna need some guidance from our fire chief.
We, I, Jody's here, uh, she's been doing the fire, uh, state fire marshal, if you want to.
'Cause I mean, I get, we're gonna obviously have some, I mean, my own questions is, you know, we only have a volunteer fire department. There's nobody on this board that can say what we're looking at meets approval by the state fire marshal or our own fire chief.
I started meeting with the fire chief well over a year ago.
Okay.
Oh.
And got him involved in a process, and he's talking to him. There's a whole form, um, which is called a fire safety analysis form. And it's a whole manual, two-hundred-page manual, so if you wanna go out and look at it, be careful not to print it.
Don't strain yourself.
And that, that's what I have to follow when I do any bulk plant. And part of that whole analysis is looking at the site, looking at your first responders, looking at mutual aid, looking at water. That's why there's a fire pond being proposed on this site, is because you don't have hydrants down that street.
Yeah.
And it speeds up and makes it much safer. Now, another thing about that fire pond is that fire pond of dry hydrant, we're designing it and giving access to the town. Mr. Fieldings will maintain, you know, so you will plow it and maintain that fire pond, and that can be used for any structural fire that you might have here in the community. That was a condition that the fire chief and I discussed as something that was needed for this project.
Great. For the town.
So there's no requirement for, for non-liquid, uh, like foam or anything like that, there's kind of some?
Not for propane. What we look for in propane is oil.
Isn't there oil going, yeah, the heating fuel going?
I only do the fire safety for the propane.
Okay.
There is a requirement, um, for foam, and that will be covered under the S P C C plan, which is, um, all things oil.
Okay.
Now, is there a contingency plan if this fire pond doesn't hold water or have water, or? We're, you know, we're only seeing preliminary design tiers, it's, this fire pond will actually have water in it?
We did a test, yeah, we did a test, and the test bit was left a little bit open.
Yeah.
And I've been out there twice now in two months, three months, and it's been full of water.
Yeah.
Right to the top.
I believe that, you know, we're gonna have to talk to our fire chief.
Yep.
Obviously, but I would believe there'd have to be something here that would guarantee this fire pond.
Part of the analysis also has contingency plans.
Okay.
So, um, you have to, you have to have Plan A, Plan B, Plan C.
Yeah, obviously.
And that includes mutual aid, and, um, that includes some site-specific training, training that I would do with him, um, or, and with the department, and whatever mutual aid he needs.
Okay.
So we designed the pond a little bit below the wetland surface?
Yeah.
So that it's gonna fill.
Okay.
From the, from the water that's.
And that's small enough that it doesn't matter that it's draining the wetlands?
Right. It's really gonna, just be a pond, it's not even gonna drain, it's just gonna, it'd be a lot more water.
It was more of a question, 'cause I've seen them dry before.
Yes, yeah, there are wetlands that are dry, but most wetlands have water within fifteen inches or ten inches of service. So I, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that.
Yeah, I know, this year's been really wet, 'cause my property's got it.
Yep.
Places are really wet, they were completely dry last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, we also, we have a noise ordinance in town, and I noticed it said there would be twenty-four hour for fueling and filling and, at times.
There, there, in emergency case, when somebody runs out of fuel in the middle of the night, we will go out with a truck, and we'll load that truck, and off we'll go to do that delivery. So you'll hear a truck, and you'll hear the truck leave. Typically, that operation is not subject to noise ordinances. I didn't review your specific ordinance, I have had clients that did noise studies in the past, but typically, you're not gonna get a lot of noise out of that kind of operation that you're gonna regulate. Typically, they're looking at motors or pumps that are making a lot of noise.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't think we have anything like that.
No. And the lighting will be?
All looking at source lighting down at where we're doing the work.
Can I ask why the whole area is not paved? Is there a specific?
So that we can spin the trucks around and not, you know, when you, when you have a small area like this, and you're gonna bring a tractor-trailer in and turn it, it's just gonna beat up the pavement, you know, it's, it's the way we find, so he wanted to do it all with reclaim. If, you know, the wood feels something else is necessary, we don't want it.
Okay.
Uh, typically, when you start turning those trucks around, uh, especially tractor-trailer, if you start turning those around, you'll, you'll spin and you'll beat up the pavement.
Just one off to look at throughout site plan review?
Yeah, yeah. We can reclaim asphalt, will soften up, and then as you drive over again, it'll tighten up again, so typically, that will do a good surface for you, but.
Yeah.
Again, we can talk to the board, what you want.
So the, the rare animals is off the lot.
It's off the lot, as far as I can tell, based on the mapping.
Is the Joe Poy weed?
That's just the label.
Okay. But is that actually in, you know, if that's residence on, residence, is endemic on the lot?
No, I believe, I believe.
Oh, that's in the same area?
Yeah.
Okay.
That we have in Lebanon.
Rare, rare Lebanon.
What that is?
Yeah.
That rare animal that we have in Lebanon? That rare species?
What is it?
No, I don't know, that's why I'm asking if Jen knows of the.
Species of special concern.
Racist, they don't.
The what?
Racist, that's a big snake.
Stop.
As well, so it could be almost, almost any amphibian.
Frogs.
Although it would be, yeah, there would be amphibians and stuff like that, but.
You know, we're just trying to figure out what the rare animal is.
Yeah, I can find out, I can.
Probably is that snake.
The state, the state doesn't like to tell you the specifics, so we can, we can try to get more data. They came right off the state resource, that graphic that you see.
They can stay on your side of the road. I've actually seen one of them.
Yeah, they're harmless.
You may see any other questions they have, or?
Not at the moment, I think it's.
I'd, I'd like to dig in.
Yeah, I hope, yeah.
I was surprised that I was supposed to bring the package, we understood it, to, to you tonight, so.
It seems like a really complete, fairly complete at this point, we just need to look at it.
Yeah, we need to go.
We need to see the heating fuel. I mean, it, it sounds like you got the propane stuff nailed down with the fire department. Has anything been done with the heating fuel yet? Cause you said that's not your game.
It normally isn't.
Who wouldn't?
He's, he's reviewed the site plan, so, um, it, it was in his packet for the fire safety analysis, so he's aware of the oil. And the email corresponds.
The chief is aware.
Chief, okay.
Yes, yeah, the chief is aware, and, um, what he and I discussed this afternoon was him going to visit one of Fielding's other facilities, so he would be able to see the order of that firm too. We talked about a, a site review, because what's being proposed here in Lebanon is exactly, almost exactly what, um, Fieldings has in Lewiston and Scarborough. So he wanted to, um, look at those facilities also.
And I, I assume he's been through all the D E S groups as well?
Now.
I assume.
I.
Can someone speak to that?
No.
We can, you can.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, do we, you have to have an onsite containment plan, obviously.
The concrete, concrete, uh, foundation around it, which I counted as a structure, is the containment.
Okay.
So it's designed to contain one-hundred-and-ten percent.
Okay.
Okay, is what, is what will be, okay.
Yeah.
So that will be the containment there.
Okay. We're gonna have, we're gonna definitely have some technical questions.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll try to get some answers, I know enough to be dangerous, but.
Okay.
Typically, a, uh, I, I do a lot of these type of projects, not as much in fuel as I do other projects, but typically, an S P C plan is done site-specific after the project is built, and they'll do site-specific training and site-specific details of the S P C, what they have to do in case of spill prevention and so on and so forth.
Yes.
All the names and stuff like that, but we can certainly talk to that, you know, the next time we come. As, we came here tonight just to get a sense of what your questions were.
Yeah.
So that I could get a better sense of what I gotta do.
'Cause obviously I had jobs to put all this together, and I'm sure we're, we have a package that we understand and the town can live with, and.
Yes, yeah.
Like.
So I think the first thing we really need to do is schedule a site walk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For this.
Mm-hmm.
Our chairman's not here today, so. But, um. Obviously, we'd like you to be present, if you could.
Yeah, yeah, as long as I get.
Yeah, is there, right?
Day available.
Yeah.
You guys should pre-visit and make sure those snakes are not there. You guys should pre-visit and make sure those snakes are not there.
I'm not getting out of the car, they are.
And I'll be running down.
I collected rattlesnakes for my thesis, so if there's any snakes there, I'll deal with them.
Okay, he's saying take them.
When, obviously, you'd like to be on the agenda for our next meeting, which would be October first, right Jen?
Uh, I've got this for the twenty-third of this month.
Oh, I know, are we not having, on the twenty-third?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do two meetings this month, aren't we?
Yeah, that's what we wrote down.
Last night, we held it in case we needed it and it sounds like we might.
Yeah.
I have no meetings on, do you like to do your onsites before your meetings or do you do them on?
We do sometimes.
Yeah.
If everybody can make it.
We may have all the one to two, so.
Right.
We'd like to.
Yeah, that's gonna be tough to do them on a Monday and get them in before.
It's not gonna happen.
No, it's not gonna happen.
No.
Any day of the, week better for you, I know you have.
Uh, just not a Wednesday.
Not a Wednesday.
But, I mean, it's not the end of the world, if it's Wednesday.
Yeah.
So, pretty much anytime, just whenever.
Tuesdays mornings tend to be bad for me, but the same thing, nothing, nothing I can't do if I have to.
I'd have to do it afterward.
Yeah, evenings are, usually always try to do a meeting.
I'm back anytime after five, I'm home, I'm back in Lebanon by five.
Does any day work better for you, are you down this way, or?
I'm, I'm not, but I can be here, I have a bunch of planned meetings going on this month. So, would, would, if you tell me a day, I can tell you right away whether, I think I can, we might schedule that.
So, Friday work good for everybody, or?
Friday, the twentieth.
Yeah, Friday, the twentieth?
I have no events, how's that?
That's hard to look at.
You and I don't either.
Oh, wow.
Look at that, Jen.
You do now.
It's a three-hour drive for me, so.
What time?
Three hours?
Yeah.
Oh, cause you, you mean Sarah have football too?
I'm from Vermont.
That's a Vermont player.
That's all games, so.
Well, if, if it's your way, I'm just going, gives me three for his leg.
Yeah.
So, he's not playing, it's home, but.
What time's the games?
I'll, I'll figure it out.
They're usually at like, what, six, seven o'clock?
Yeah, they change that.
Obviously, nice.
Well, there's a couple of weeks of the Saturday games because other high schools won't play, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Later, we, later we can do, it's always better for me.
Well, it's time to get back earlier, have you noticed, like, is that?
He's on the crash meeting?
Oh, okay, so I'm good, I'm good anytime, so.
Four, four-thirty? Is that?
Oh, I can only be for five, but I can just be right there.
Okay, no, five's, no, five's fine for me.
Okay.
Five's better for me.
Yeah, five's.
I work, I work late anyways.
Five's early enough.
All right, let's go for five.
Five o'clock on the twentieth?
Yes.
All right.
And if we come up with any more questions between now and then, we'll have Jen email you.
Yeah, if you can email stuff and we'll talk to the client about S P C plans and oil tanks and try to get you some.
Yeah, and then we'll get you on the agenda for the twenty-third if you, if we feel you need to be and.
On the twentieth?
Oh, yeah.
Twentieth, twentieth would be the.
Oh, that, the twenty-third, yeah.
Never have a meeting. Yes.
I'll be sitting here by myself on the twentieth.
No, we're having a meeting October seventh also.
Okay, so we'll plan on October seventh.
Okay, all right.
So, on the twenty-third, on the seventh, I'm not sure, I know.
Okay, no, that might be better for us, cause maybe on the.
And that's fine.
And maybe on the twenty-third, we could actually have our fire chief involved with us to answer some questions for us, to make sure what we are approving, we're all talking and having the same opinion on it.
Okay.
Because also our site plan ordinance is new to us too.
So, it's coordinated some.
This is also some more problems.
It looked pretty decent, uh, from one of the S P C ordinance.
Are we gonna be in the middle of the site plan that?
We worked hard on it.
Yeah.
So, the twenty-third would be when we would be viewing them.
I go, uh, uh, they wanna go on the schedule for the seventh?
Seventh.
So, but we're gonna have a meeting on the twenty-third, so we'll probably end up putting them on our agenda to, and then we won't have to have a workshop after our site work.
That's a good.
Right, Jen? We could just work the site at, at our normal meeting, you can put in the agenda, so we don't have to have a workshop.
September twenty.
Fire chief right now.
Okay.
Will you schedule the October fourth, will there be a public hearing, is that, do you guys typically do that?
I'm not that sure.
October, October seventh.
I assume we'd have our engineers look at it, just for.
We don't have, we don't have a engineer yet.
Well, there are three different, there are three that passed last week, so we have, so we have engineers now.
I don't think we need to do that right now, do we?
I, I don't know.
That's an added expense.
That's a question.
Yeah, we're gonna need to talk to the fire chief first.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Figure out where we're at.
Yeah.
I asked, I asked Jen to invite the fire chief to the site.
Yeah, good.
The site review.
Yeah, I think that.
Another thing we could, we could do is, and, well, it wouldn't help you on the oil stuff, but on the propane stuff, sometimes towns ask me to apply for the state permit to get the state review back. And the town likes to have the state approve the plan, sort of, instead of having an engineer.
Yes, I'd like that.
I think that's.
That'd be a great help.
That'd be great, yeah.
But that doesn't, doesn't help with, with the oil, what's just for the propane.
Well, I'm sure there's something equivalent at the state level for oil.
I've got it.
What are the, what are the other, like, uh, oil people that are in town do?
They just pick the ass up down.
Oh, they do?
In or something, yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's not, okay.
They don't have storage, yeah, I don't believe we have any of the storage tanks and whatnot.
I don't think so.
Okay.
They all, you just go down.
I know they've really cracked down on tanks in the last ten years, but.
Yeah, no, I've got a couple guys that I've used in the past, so we can, we can get that.
If you wanna make that recommendation to the fire chief, I, I normally don't do that until the fire chief is kind of, and the town has sort of signed off on it, I don't, I don't, it's sort of an assumption, I don't like to jump. Um, but some towns recently have been asking me to do that, saving them the engineering work.
Yeah.
I would think that that would be best than to do, it's to get the, the state, yeah.
Be a good.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right, it's, it's a neutral third party, so it's, it's perfect and it doesn't take just the money.
Price is right, for everybody.
And they're doing it anyway, right?
Well, that's sort of our process, you know, the feeling is wise.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a state, so like, yeah.
And we're gonna have to do it anyway, right.
If we're doing like major changes on the site plan, but I don't see where we'd be moving roads or doing a whole lot.
Yeah, it's just, it's just pretty straightforward.
You know, so, because the state does not want to approve a site plan and then have us come back and, and.
Of course, yes.
You know, so, that's the only, that would be the only thing that I would say.
Okay, and after our site plan, then we'll have our Monday meeting and we'll schedule time during that to discuss that and get any more questions for you. And we'll get them to you before the October seventh meeting, so you come in.
But we'd be sending it in two different directions, cause we'd be sending it to the propane and then to the oil, so, what I would be sending, you know, it would just be half of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have, we have two that we need to chase.
And I can, I can work with Bill on the other one, I got somebody that'll do that.
Good.
I didn't know I need, I thought you were doing both, so, we can, I get the people that I had installed and do these kinds, so, so I just gotta call them and talk to them.
So, we're not gonna do Friday, we're just gonna do.
No, still.
No, we're gonna do Friday, the twentieth, we'll do the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
And then.
At five, we'll be meeting here?
Yep.
Okay.
And then we'll, then on the Monday meeting, we'll schedule time for, instead of having a special workshop.
Yep.
Are we meeting here or at the site?
We can meet at the site.
Yeah, it's just.
Friday, the, Friday.
Cause then I know when they're gonna be on the five.
Yeah, at the site.
We usually meet right at the site.
But like five, like, five, when, five, I get right on to do it.
You'll be right on time.
It's all pretty well grubbed, so it's gonna be easy to walk the site, won't take too long.
Good.
I still may wear my boots if there's snakes.
Yeah, definitely.
If it's really cold on the twentieth.
Yeah.
If you wanna see the wetlands, you'll be walking through the wetlands a little bit.
Chief, do, do enjoy.
Wear your mask.
I want a piggyback ride.
I carry no one.
We'll have it safe, you don't wanna have to go far in.
Yeah, will there be, has there been some survey done and everything?
There hasn't been, the wetlands have been done, there hasn't been a lot of surveying, but we've been doing a lot of measurements out there, so we could stake out the general location of the tanks.
Okay.
Yeah, beautiful.
All right, I think what we, we need, and we'll have Jen email you any other questions we have, so on the seventh, we're ready for it.
Perfect.
And I'll try and set up, um, at least before the seventh, um, something, so the fire chief can go see one of Fielding's other facilities.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Excellent.
So, try and help him.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That looks good.
Thank you.
Bye.
Moving along.
Moving along.
This will be interesting, yeah, I'm gonna learn a lot on this one.
Yeah, it, it's very, I think it's very well put together, so, even, even I could follow it.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, I'm someone who had no idea, I was like, oh, I get this.
Well, it's, it's kind of a new, a new thing, you know.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Pretty more mess. All right, next, Andy Boisianas, Lebanon crossing, these two. All right, so basically, all we have is this in front of us.
And a letter.
And a letter, yes. And my letter, what did I do?
Letter.
What did I do in my? What did I do in my letter? You got a copy of the letter? I did read it, I think I picked it up at some point. Do you have one?
I don't think I have one.
They both look so much robotic.
Oh, no, I think you did it at our last meeting, that's it.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I have two, two of them now.
Like we were.
One's. Right, yeah.
Things, so, these are like, all the bushes and, and it did, the fencing, all the signs have changed. All the lighting is gonna be the same.
Two sides, there's a factor.
The fire things and stuff like that, so there's.
Oh, gotcha.
It's gonna be.
All right, so we're all clear on the same page, when this originally was built, we did not have site plan review in Lebanon.
That's correct.
And it was, it was one structure on a conforming lot, so it didn't need subdivision approval either.
Right, so they didn't have to come up here.
No, they didn't, they did present it to us and they presented us their D O T plan.
Mm-huh.
And, but after that, it was, it became a code issue.
Oh, that's right.
But now, I'm explaining this right, if I remember everything right, if I say something wrong, Jen, tell me. But now, we are in a situation, and I think we had, you were told at the time, now it's, it falls on the subdivision.
No.
No. It's not.
Not yet, because.
Cause there's not three residents.
Originally, it was gonna be three units, and because that would have caused the subdivision, he decided to do the two units instead.
Yeah.
And so, he did the first one, and that is all set, now he wants to put the second unit in, so it's not a subdivision.
Even though we're seeing two more units?
Yeah, no.
Well, there's no residential unit on it now, correct?
Correct.
So, it's gonna have a total of two residential units, which is not a subdivision.
But these aren't residential, are they? No, these are commercial.
Yeah.
It's the Dunkin' Donuts.
It's the Dunkin' Donuts, yeah.
Which one's Dunkin' Donut on the back here?
So, these aren't departments?
They're not apartments.
Oh, I thought, for some reason, I thought they were apartments.
Yeah, because there's no other, right.
And there's no other.
So, this doesn't fall into subdivision rules and site plan?
It is not, it's.
For, uh.
Doing the third.
Twenty-five hundred square feet, fifteen hundred square feet.
So, we decided to do, so we're doing subdivision.
Okay.
We're going to do the two units.
Sorry, I don't remember where I got the idea that it was a residence.
Okay, so I guess then this, you're only building one more unit at this time?
Yeah, it'll have.
Okay, all right.
It's kind of two?
About fifteen square, a batch.
Okay.
Separated by.
Oh, yeah, no, so they're not doing a third one, okay, not yet.
In the rest area that's there now.
But does three, does three commercial count as a subdivision, or does three residential accounts as a subdivision?
Well, no, this would.
I don't think, he's only doing two, though, there is no.
No, cause there's three units.
Right, because the original plan that was.
Right, so, can we just pretend like that third unit's not even on this paper?
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's why it just looks odd, that third unit's not even there.
It's not there at all.
It's really only just two.
Okay, so now I'm confused, it's three units within five years.
But he's not doing three units, he only want, it's only two now, like, pretend that third one never existed.
But the Dunkin' Donuts counts as a unit.
That's one.
Right, and then he only wants to add one more.
He's adding two.
No.
No, that's why I'm saying, ignore that, ignore it.
He's not, he's not adding two.
So, you're not doing both of these?
We're doing both of those, but it's one structure.
But it's two units.
Two units.
So, that's three businesses, that's three units.
No. No.
But it, no, but it's still one, it's like a duplex, I guess, like, you're thinking of it like a duplex and creating two separate.
Subdivision, okay, so I'm going, this is my question, in residential, if you have three residential units, it doesn't matter if they're apartments, it doesn't matter if they're separate structures, three is a subdivision.
Right, well.
Is commercial, it's the same, is my question, cause this is three units.
Not if you don't have a middle wall, it's one.
You have Dunkin' Donuts.
And one.
And you have fifteen hundred square foot unit.
No.
And twenty-five hundred square foot unit.
You have the two added together as one.
Well, either, either way, it's gonna fall into site plan review.
It is.
Yeah, well, this, but then the question becomes, it doesn't count as a subdivision, that's, that's, and I don't know, this is going to have a workshop, sorry, this is confusing.
And then the subdivision, it's for residential.
Well, that's, yeah, I don't know if residential and commercial handle the same way, and that's, I'm gonna have to dig through stuff and find the answer on that.
We'll deal with that in a minute, so, obviously, this is gonna fall into site plan review, which is new ordinance in town that wasn't in place when you built the Dunkin'.
But when we originally came before, and even when I spoke to the previous code enforcement officer, we had incorporated it all under the original plan, building phase one first, and then building phase two after, but doing all the site plan, all the site work all at the same time, which we did and we've completed.
Yes.
Um. And then I emailed him and asked, what do we need for phase two's building, and he said a stamp set of architectural plans, which I said, not a problem, and that's what we're working on now to get the building approved.
Okay.
Is that how this like your grandfather?
I don't know. Well.
So we just delayed the construction of phase two.
I don't think we can reinvent anything anymore.
Okay.
But I get how it's one, I get how it's one structure, it's just about a two.
Three structures and units.
Yeah, was phase, I guess we need to know if phase two was approved originally, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, it was approved.
It was approved.
Okay.
And how long it's an approval good for?
Yeah, it's two years, okay.
Uh, two years?
Two years is typically a one week good course, unless there's a.
Well, the, the building permit, so.
Yeah.
But we, okay, as far as so, in, if you go by a subdivision thing, you have.
So we got the, they're still within the time, timeframe.
Three years for shows of things, substantial work done.
But that's if it's a seven.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Something's already been.
So I guess we need to know what was actually approved originally, because it definitely now falls on the site plan, because it's the expansion of a non, of an existing non-residential building or structure.
I'll go grab the cans right now.
Absolutely right. Presently, all is zero, so Dunkin' Donuts building, correct?
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
And two more units.
Two more units, one structure, two units.
Right.
And they're commercial.
Yeah.
What about the, when's the physical therapist, I don't know.
I'd like to know what.
He's right there.
Oh, what are the, what's going in there?
Physical therapist for the twenty-five hundred square foot and the fifteen hundred is just gonna be classified as B business for right now, there's no deterrent.
Yeah.
Maybe our future compare, let our computer people.
Maybe.
Yeah, I'm assuming it must've been designed originally to handle that many, much traffic and, yeah, so we, we know, we only saw it preliminary and then it went to code, the investment, so as soon as Jen tells us what was actually approved.
And the parking. So they'll extend the parking the length of a new building, park the building, I'm assuming, that one.
No, the site, the site's done, right?
Yeah, we, we did everything for the, the, the whole six thousand square foot complex.
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, there's like.
They're gonna go to Dunkin' Donuts more often.
I know, I know, it's.
Wait, next to it, it's just like a big, it looks like a big planting box.
I, yeah, yeah, I'm, it's coming, yeah.
It's just like, you know, the pretty trees and it's like that, like.
Yep, I know what you're saying now, now that I'm.
Yeah.
You know, this is, I like to kind of see it.
Yeah, that's how I get too.
I also got emailed Jen from May fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm trying to see the original. So.
Alright, so.
It shows a four thousand square foot retail area is one, so it shows the Dunkin' Donuts and then the second.
Part of it. Oh, yeah, two thousand, four thousand.
And this is what was approved, Jen?
Yeah, well, it was, it did not have a full plan board, but because it was the different phases.
Right.
It did.
But.
Just had a.
Yeah, so, so what I'm seeing here is one structure with two units, one being the existing dunks and the other being four thousand square feet. So that's not what you, that's not what you're building now, you're building two structures.
Original one just showed the outline, but it was supposed to be at the free, sort of, of the free non-dwelling units.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did, you told us, I remember the original.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I wasn't here for that, so I'm just, I'm trying to reverse engineer just on what I see.
And then you, I thought you had said that you're only gonna do two, and you're gonna be on the third.
No, we're gonna do both the twenty-five hundred and fifteen hundred at the same time.
But only ones just to be rented right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
But originally, that's what I'm saying.
The reason we were just gonna do the two thousand Dunkin'.
Right, and then the second, the second unit, yeah.
And then, yeah.
And a four thousand, yeah.
And then it just ended up, um, the way we have the layout and, and what we have for use, um, twenty-five and fifteen hundred, we wanted to put a, um, a walkway in between, uh, landscape walkway, just to make the access for the rear parking.
Yeah.
Um, plus also not disrupt the, uh, the current building, it'd be just as easy, but it'd be easier, and I think it'd look nicer to have that landscape buffer in between, just make it easier for employees who are part out back or, um, whoever to get to and from the back.
I think the biggest question is what was approved originally by code, cause I mean, if you follow, I mean, it definitely falls on the site plan review.
Yeah, do we have any other documentation for the original approval? And we gotta have, if the building, or did the building permits come before planning board?
Nope. This would, this didn't come before planning board at all.
This is for the, came for the, um.
So it was just the, the building permits for the current dunks?
Yeah, they brought it as a courtesy to us to present it to the planning board, at the current time, we had no ordinance in effect that required them, cause they were building on a conforming lot.
Right.
And that's when I, when we got ready to do phase two, I emailed both Jen and Steve, and Steve replied saying that, you know, just the, what you need is the building prep for phase two.
Yeah.
Um, and I showed them that outline of the plan, and you guys had a, and the, the, the ovation of the, uh.
Yeah, this one.
Of, of the outline, yeah, and, uh, asked them, has made a set of stamps, a stamp set of drawings.
That's when you first came, right, in two thousand seventeen?
Uh, yeah, I've got it right here, this is dated seventeen, December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
It's good ones tonight, huh, test your brain.
We're looking to test your brain right there, we're just waiting for you to come up with the answer there.
I mean, he's still technically only building one, so it has two units.
Two uses.
Well, I said that.
Yeah, well, it's also.
Pretty small.
So I guess like I don't. Because he's putting that sidewalk.
Yeah, and, and because it's three units instead of two.
But I mean. Yeah, but it originally had said three structures, so he just combined the one structure, he combined the two structures to.
But the reason he combined it was to avoid subdivision.
Well, the structural issue, like you say, like.
I, I, I don't, without the actual paper trail, I'm just pulling.
But they don't have them, cause they didn't have anything in place or anything, so we're kind of starting from.
They came with a traffic study in November.
So I guess my one question then is, um, so overall, the original footprint was four thousand square feet, or no, it was six thousand, okay.
It's still gonna be six thousand.
It's still gonna be six thousand, it's not huge.
So.
Nothing's deviating from that.
Well, is the Dunkin' Donuts smaller than the two, I, that's what I mean, you got the sidewalk.
Yeah, how big was the dunks built?
Your footprint had, if the sidewalk had added, the footprint get bigger, or was the Dunkin' Donuts smaller?
The Dunkin' is two thousand square feet.
Yeah, so basically, you're adding, how big is the walkway, six feet, I think it was?
Yeah.
It's hard to read on the tiny one.
It's just, um, instead of feet, instead of feet, as wide as the Dunkin', it got bumped out towards the back.
Fifteen feet, so. There's an extra. Yeah, so take this line, move this whole half fifteen feet.
Oh, so you're saying, so it's not wide now, it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the footprint's changed.
Yeah.
The physical therapist will be deeper.
Okay, so you, so.
So you just.
But the footprint has changed.
The footprint has definitely changed.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm going.
But it's all within that site plan.
It's all within the sidewalk curved area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How?
So I guess that's.
Oh, because you bumped backwards.
Yeah, because he bumped it out.
Got it, you bumped it actually, so you.
So the square foot didn't actually change.
It's all just a granite curve.
You got narrower and deeper.
Yeah.
Got it.
So the square foot didn't. Same square feet, different.
Well, the, the finished square footage doesn't change, but everything else does.
Not the same footprint.
Not the same. That's where I'm, that's where I'm going.
Absolutely, right.
Well, that's where I'm going with this, the footprint has changed.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Well, this will come because of the one.
Right, so was the original, what was the original approval, Jen?
That's what I'm trying to find in the minutes.
Okay.
That's, that's exactly right.
You're right, go with the stand, I mean, you know, cause if it's.
Cause now it's not.
This is also new to us, this, you know, you know, this ordinance has only been in.
And like I said, that's why I emailed Steve, and Steve said, what you need is a stamp set of drawings.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And a building permit to, to finish up.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think Steve, was Steve aware of the, what the ordinance entailed at that point? Okay.
Well, he was when he told him this.
Okay.
Is Mike still working now? Jen?
Um, a couple, a couple of time.
Yeah, that's, that's the other problem we're having right now, is Steve was not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
After we had and what we had.
My gut feeling is if this has changed at all, it needs to go through site plan review, which doesn't mean we would approve it, Dan.
I actually, I actually think even if it hasn't changed, it needs to go through site plan review.
I think it does.
Because it means, it means all the criteria.
If where they decide it right now, it would all go through.
Just because you have a building permit, doesn't mean.
Well, yes, but he got the building permit and everything before this, this ordinance went into effect.
Right, but there's no grandfather clause in the ordinance.
Uh, is there?
Not that I saw one already.
I didn't see one.
But if he has an, if he has an active permit, yeah.
I mean, the law's already there, so what are you gonna tell him, like, no, we can't do it now, then it's just.
No, 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 I, I just think that there might be some poops to jump through.
You have to do some changes, there's a little more paperwork.
So this doesn't happen again, so that we've got the solid paper trail of everything that was approved and.
It clearly falls under number nine, if you go down through our site plan review, the construction or expansion of a paved area or other impervious surfaces, including walkways, access drives, parking lots involving the area of more than two thousand five hundred square feet within a three-year period.
It's number one.
What was number nine?
Number nine is, the construction or expansion of a paved area or other impervious surfaces, including walkways, access drives, parking lots involving an area of more than two thousand five hundred square feet.
Right.
So the parking would not have changed?
No, but the, the walkways have changed and the overall.
Footprint.
Footprint.
Construction replacement of a new building.
It has changed.
Expansion, or if you just expand it, expanding of.
You gotta do it.
Which, this doesn't, you know, all, all we're doing is, basically, we're gonna have to go through the process to approve this, is what we think, but we still need to see what was actually approved by code at the time, because at the time.
So I think that's what we said.
Right, cause at the time, it was a conforming lot.
At the time, it's.
That's trouble, we have so many things, so we're not.
We have so many things, we apologize, Dan, that this is another one that's due.
Well, they weren't approved, and now they've.
Now they are.
We're running into that all the time now.
Yes, we are.
Not your fault, but complicates things a bit. And what was the use they put it in for?
Yeah.
That's the other thing.
And our next problem is our code enforcement that was here at the time is, who want to go with us?
Right.
We've done general business for all the uses.
General, general business, okay.
Started with Michael, right?
Oh, we did?
I think.
Oh, yeah, I think you're right.
Was he here still then?
Started with Michael, and then he left, and then Brian was here, and.
Yeah, so, I mean. So Mike, and he's, he can probably answer some of the questions we may have, or he may have it in his, in those, what about the files? Hmm, I know that when we change people, it's a little bit.
Yeah, but I mean, we are, we're on an existing site, we, they had a plan, so I think, more than anything, we're just gonna need a full application.
But I think we may actually have grounds for some, some waivers. Uh, no, so we're changing site conditions, so that wouldn't work, substitution.
I think we have to nail on the head with the last ordinance.
If we have pre-existing documents, we might have some substitution capable that would.
Which just needs.
If we had the pre-existing state, if it was approved, yeah.
If we have it, yeah.
I mean, my opinion right now is, what we need is a full application.
I agree.
And then, if we, and we also need to ask code some questions, Dan?
Both, I agree.
Yeah. So, what are your thoughts here, I mean.
Yeah.
Based on our new site plan ordinance, and unless we can be given something from code saying that this was prior approved, as is.
Which is that email that I have from code.
Right, but the document says it's, or the email.
Right, so we need to see that, so.
Yeah.
I think what we need is a little more information from our code enforcement officer, and then Jen can let you know if we're gonna need a full application. My opinion right now is this would be more of a, just a formal process to get the application complete, I mean, obviously, it's already been approved, it's a commercial business, the site was designed to handle what you're doing, but it's also a little bit of a change, and now we have this site plan ordinance. So I think what we need is to talk to code, get a little more information from them, and then Jen can let you know if we're gonna need a full application with, well, we would waive some of the requirements, obviously, cause you have a drawing, we know the site's complete, we knew you'd already planned on having other tenants there with a larger building.
Yep.
So I think there'd be some waivers, we just probably need the full application, my gut feeling is a public hearing wouldn't be needed, but it's just, we need to know what code approved to start with, so.
I think it just, you're right, it follows through with what we're going for, we know what is on there, what, yeah.
Right, so I think between now and our next meeting, Dan, and we could get you on the, the agenda for the next meeting, we'll have our answers from code.
Fill out the application.
I mean, it might be in your best, what do you think, Jen, fill out the.
Yeah, we started.
I mean, I don't start, it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think, it's not, you have pretty much everything you need except filling it out, you know, you have a site plan, you have. It's all online.
It's part of your records.
And then there's a small fee to, you know, file the.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna get started in that direction, that's probably the right way to go, and then Jen can notify you if it's not needed, and if we have it, she'll save the space on the agenda for the next meeting for you.
Which would be the twenty-third?
Yep. You agree with all that, Jen?
Yeah, cause we started going for that, so, we started going through that, so we can.
So it's partially signed, it's served already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's beautiful.
Yep, alright.
And our next meeting is on the twenty-third?
Yes.
Correct.
So if you can, Jen will notify you before then if you need it, but if not, if you could have the application in, cause I, my opinion, we'll need to.
I agree a hun, I agree a hundred percent that.
I don't think we'll need it, I don't think we'll need a public hearing or a site walk or anything for this, we just need the.
But it goes with following, what we're trying to do right now is that we know where it's where and that everything is A-OK with it.
Yes.
I think the fire department, we emailed the fire department.
Oh, good, yeah.
Um, they had two questions, um, one being what the, like, what the tenant was, and.
Yeah.
You know, just beginning for, uh, duplicating the same fire alarm system, I said it's actually an extension, uh, of the current one, so, um, we're tying in tenant two and three to the current fire alarm, even though it's not required to have a fire alarm, he's tied it on the property.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, cause we believe in it, not because it's not required, um, and he was good with, he said everything else, he was good with the separation and the two buildings and.
Alright, very good, I think we'll, we'll have some answers for you, and you'll have some answers for us, and.
Good job.
I know, it's so moving. And it's only seven o'clock.
I know.
I, I learned from Sarah to keep things moving.
You're, you're actually move fast.
I haven't really got to see Sarah in action.
Okay, she does, she does very good.
Yeah, she, she, she is, she does, so, right on the money with the stuff.
Okay.
Alright, alright, so that one, next one is Ridgewood Drive, I don't, did we have any other information besides that, Jen, or?
Yeah.
I didn't see it in our package they mailed, so.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Is Ridgewood Drive present, or?
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
We should be quiet.
Okay. Excuse us, we'll just have, take us a minute to see what we got here.
Oh, yeah.
My filing system is quite lovely.
So basically, Ridgewood Drive was a subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Done in eighties, seventy-two?
I'm not sure of the year, so we're purchasing a lot, and I'm Ridgewood Drive, and what it is, is the lot has an existing foundation on it, and the leach field's all in, and the well's in, and we'd just like to build a house on the foundation, basically. And, uh, so I, I gave her documentation, it was a previous building permit approved after two thousand eight, with the septic design plans and everything all approved, and, uh, so it's basically, it was put for a building permit, a lot, I would be foundation, an existing foundation, so it was a, uh, inspection of the foundation, everything was fine with the foundation.
Okay, well, my next question, yeah.
Yeah, we have the report, I think it's with paperwork.
Now, Ridgewood Drive was an approved subdivision from, back then, Jen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, from a while ago.
So this is a.
So it's basically.
So it's a conforming lot and an approved subdivision.
Yeah, the last one, so I'm not sure even one more here.
Yeah, no, that's, that's kind of.
The all different code on the foundation and all that, cause I don't think it's changed since then.
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, it's a hundred and ten feet away from the shore.
Yeah.
So it's over the shore.
I mean, yeah, I mean, so fear, a hundred and ten feet, so where is Ridgewood Drive?
At the top of the line.
Yeah, it's way up at the, little at the tip of, um, northeast, like on the river, actually.
Can you get by, it's way up there.
Okay.
That kind of river.
So do we have, would we happen to have a plan, Jen?
It's two pieces.
You just started made, when you said shoreline, now this, this.
Yeah, you just got the shoreline, so it's why.
Now you're.
Cause it's a new structure.
No, it's on, it's.
It's not, it's like, and this is, if this is a conforming lot with just a house going on, it doesn't fall under us at all.
Change of.
Oh.
Yeah, this doesn't fall under us, but if we're in a shoreline protection zone, now you've.
No, I disagree. Yeah.
Opened up something new.
Right.
So.
That we, that we need to do.
That it was seventy-five feet.
Nothing, not saying it can't be built or anything, it's just something, now we need to, we, we just need to see what we're looking at.
For flood zones and park, all those purposes.
And if it's in, if it's in the shoreline zone, then it falls.[1656.04] And if it's in, if it's in the shoreline zone, then it falls under.
What are we going into the?
And Betty loves shoreline zone.
I do, I just love it.
It opens up, there's a whole different.
I've read it three times.
If you, if you're in there, so we need to.
Which one is it? That's, uh?
This one. It's not, it's not as scary as it looks.
Yeah, no, it's.
It's just dry. Dry reading.
Well, how are you supposed to make it exciting? I guess you could add.
I didn't see anything.
They probably shoreline, but it's very dry.
And if you, it sounds like at a hundred and ten feet, you should be fine anyway.
Yeah, because I think it was like seventy-five and a hundred percent max.
But if it is in that area, we need to look at it. Does the property about the water, then?
Yes.
Okay. I can almost tell you right now, we're gonna have to look at it.
You need to have the site, you gotta.
We may need to do a site walk, and we'll need a site plan.
Okay.
Which you may already have, if there's a foundation on it.
Um, there is one with the terminal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it show the Azville for the septic and the well?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the, like, now.
I have a hand sketch, well, that's, that's, that one.
Um, yes, this is, so we have all the packet that the previous owner, the owner that has it now.
Yeah.
Had, and, um, we could send it to Jen again, but, well, this is a hand drawing. And actually, we have, um, we also have the copies of that. But this just kind of shows quickly what they had, so we.
Sorry, I'm blind, I just can't, can't see anything.
So, yeah, see, there's a hundred and ten feet there, there's a driveway.
Do you.
It's a hundred feet wide, but, um.
Do you actually have a surveyed plan of it?
No, we don't, I mean, I don't own it.
Okay.
Where, where we're gonna purchase it, if we could build on it.
Yeah.
One of the conditions of the, uh, purchase and sales is to get a.
They must have one.
Yeah.
And.
Because we're, we're gonna need a, right now, what I'm hearing now, without seeing the actual plan or something, we are gonna need a surveyed plan showing the high water and some other requirements, so we can. And we also need it certified, saying you're actually at that distance from the water.
Uh, yeah.
Being outside of a hundred feet's a good thing.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good thing.
These are the future, purchasing it from my packet?
They might.
You can check with them. Check with them.
Boy, you have to be out, huh?
The bank would make you anyway, if you were going through.
So this is the new. One that he has. He applied for, that's the old one, which obviously has expired, these are the pictures.
I know there's a lot of people run into that, though. And once they get to the, oh, yeah, the bank sees it one way, and somebody else sees it another, and then, yeah.
Okay.
So.
It's like a better statement, sorry, that one comes through.
Those pictures.
There's a sketch at least.
Which we have pictures. Let's see some pictures.
Yeah.
Staff passing it around, is it? Package?
I think you have a foundation inspection report in there, too.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, there's some.
We're gonna approve septic, yeah, location.
They did get sketches for the, for the not surveyed.
Is the, is the well fifty feet from the. It's on the other. Is the well fifty feet from all sidelines?
From what?
From all sidelines.
Fifty?
Yeah.
Um, kind of up for all sidelines, now I'm gonna make sure of each side.
For the septic tank. Perhaps. Yeah. Do we have an approved plan for Ridgewood, or, or anything, or?
It's.
Just a question.
There's none.
Nothing on that in the files?
The only thing that I can find is subdivision, is this.
It was like a hundred years ago, and this is all that's in there.
That's old.
Well, it was from like, what, the eighties, when they went to do it, right?
Yeah.
So there's the, there's the plan. There's that.
Which two maybe? Our seventeen. It would be lot ten.
And eleven?
It's a half an acre.
How much real estate do you have?
About, um, a hundred, uh, there should be only one lot.
There's only one lot, okay, so it's either ten or eleven.
There's one that's a common. Yeah, it says that it's a half acre, yeah.
There's one that's, I think, a common beach right next to us.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
There'd be showing me that on the road.
Is it the Colter, or the one next to it? Should be one of those two.
Yeah, because the beach is here, yeah, it's just right here.
So it's the Colter lot, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's the Colter lot.
This is definitely not falling to shoreline.
Well, yeah, you can tell from the pictures, too.
Yeah, this is gonna fall into shoreline.
Right.
Yeah, there wasn't a whole lot from that that sheds light on.
So, the building permit is expired, and it's on shoreline, and where it's only a foundation, and you have that other situation, and then you don't just have to go for it.
Septic. And foundation.
Or whatever, so, I think it's better so you can start, right, on board.
Yeah, and I mean, this is a.
Out, you start, you know, something, and then, so they said it can't be, exactly, because that's not fair.
Oh, seven, so they did go for a shoreline zoning permit, Jen, there is one in here. Or.
Yeah, from two thousand seven, yeah.
Two thousand seven. It's set, very required, if I send you up to.
But was there some, some kind of like that?
There was a permit from two thousand four shoreline.
Yeah, they went for an application, but it's expired by this, by this time.
And that was through us, right, it wasn't through the, um, state?
Did it have that?
Um, vacation home. Yeah, Zeke.
Yeah.
This will be an interesting for us, because I, I already see another issue with you. I don't, do you have a new home designer, or?
Well, no, we didn't, I mean, we didn't.
You haven't gone that far, you haven't gone that far, yeah.
We're not going to, I just came, and she suggested that we put in a permit, uh, I mean, application for a permit, just to see where it goes. I mean, one, uh, I've been involved in a few of these before, and usually when there's a foundation, it's substantially started, they usually can build right on the foundation.
Right. And I think it's gonna take us, we're gonna need to do a little bit on this one, because the foundation is in.
Yeah.
But now going, what I'm looking at here, this house, not sure if you've read our shoreline zoning yet, but there is a height requirement within different zones on the.
Thirty-five feet, right?
Uh, outside of, well, it's outside, it's outside of a hundred.
Yeah.
So we're outside the hundred foot. So that's gonna be the difference. I have it, I think.
No page in time.
My highlight is one.
It's a shoreline, okay.
We could probably get that on.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need a copy of it?
No, I got it.
He has one right there.
I know it's in here somewhere, I just haven't memorized this one enough to find it.
Jen, do we know what zone this is in? As far as our map? Do you wanna see this, Betty? Pass this around, I'm holding on to it, and I'm looking at something else.
Some probably what.
The original file, yeah, remind me, pick me.
Resource protection two.
Yes. Okay, resource protection two.
Because yours is on the water side, right?
So, resource protection. Just trying to figure where in town I'm looking at.
Right up at the top, right there.
Way, way up here.
Way, way up.
Exactly, right on the edge of Acton.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where's it?
Milton, right?
It'll be a.
Milton, the right.
It's on Acton, yeah, Acton, it's like, you gotta go right through Acton to get there.
But it's an approved subdivision, so now we kinda, how does that work? That's a new one.
So Acton's one performing, not in millennial.
Ninth fifty.
Yeah, it is, it's like point six acres, yeah.
If you, if you had a piece of land, and you split it into two non-conforming lots, no, that's illegal lots, but that's not conforming, and it was done a while ago, so.
As a subdivision, so I.
I remember having this conversation with Mike when he was here doing that training, that exact thing was brought up with him.
I'm just gonna.
About an existing foundation, and someone wanted to build on it.
That's, yeah.
Way up there.
And what you would make them do.
Oh, okay, right.
And then he said, that's.
I've actually got it here, for structures, like, you're over a hundred feet horizontal from the high water line.
Right, yeah. And I mean, if. I mean, at that point, if.
It looks like you've gotta go out of town before you can go on.
Foundation had to.
That's true, right.
Which isn't practical, right, which wouldn't be practical.
It's like its own little island up there.
Excellent.
Its own little create.
Yeah, community.
Out of urban, yeah, it's right next to.
So we're also adding a structure, it's not for an existing structure, it's a new structure.
So then you have to, like, you know, you're like thinking, that, that has to.
Yeah.
Right. But they're not making.
So.
Or seeking that, it's turning yellow as well.
Oh, yeah, it is pretty old. It's that old.
Do you see something about the heights?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Uh-oh.
A lot building or structure in or on which a non-conforming use is discontinued for a period exceeding one year, or which is superseded by a conforming use, may not again be devoted to a non-conforming use, except by the planning board. The planning board may, for good cause shown by the applicant.
Is this non-conforming?
This was a conforming use.
Well, this is a conforming use.
Yes.
Conforming, right?
That's what we need to figure out, because technically, yeah, tech, yes, technically, it's a non-conforming lot per eleven and lots, but
Yeah.
Right, this is shoreline.
Oh, shoreline is a whole different.
We need to know what the. But the, but it's an approved subdivision, so now we have a whole different animal here that we.
That doesn't. Yeah. Right. This is like a roller coaster now.
Everybody wants to.
We're testing you.
Everybody's testing us today, yeah.
So even if it's a, a non-conforming lot, you still have to have, yep, that structure within the best possible location.
That's called a spot.
So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that's why we'd have to go look at it, probably.
So you said this is resource protection?
It's in the flood zone, so.
Yeah, a hundred year.
Okay. So areas within, of two hundred fifty feet horizontal distance of upland edge of freshwater lotlands, and that's.
So two hundred fifty.
To rate them.
Structures built on over or building a, you know, or.
Two hundred and fifty feet, is that?
I was just reading this about the district.
So the lot was purchased from the subdivision and never built on, correct?
That's what it would appear, right?
Yeah.
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 Well, it started with.
Like, they put, they put a foundation, and then they.
Well.
They put in all the groundwork, but that was it.
So that's it, though, the rest of them are in.
For structures located less than two seventy-five feet horizontal distance from the low high water line of the waterline.
Yeah, yeah.
Attractions, man, are uplands. Okay. What's this square footage of the house?
Uh, it's thirty by thirty, so not, so it'll be nine hundred curve four.
In year.
Eighty-four, I think.
Two hundred and four.
Two plus.
Three hundred square feet, yeah.
Eighty-four?
Less than seventy-five feet.
Right, and he's.
We're in ten, I think, that's. That's what, I'll never be in ten, it's a hundred and ten, but we.
Right.
But I think, Jen, you'd see a site plan showing that, right?
Yeah. So. Location in the resource protection.
That was quite a subdivision.
It's located.
Yeah, so.
Right.
I think this is kinda cool.
Maximum height may not be greater than twenty-three feet.
I think this is kinda funny, when we had the funding center.
Mm-hmm.
And it was approved, but they, that was in that resource protection, too. And then when they wanted the trailers.
Right.
We couldn't do it because of that.
Yeah, that was on.
If I happened to.
That was on the side.
That was on.
You can't get there from here.
You can't get there from here, you've gotta go somewhere else for us.
Yeah. Oh, they had a building, I remember.
Yeah. So this is resource protection.
I wonder how high the building is. So two, at least two, if not three floors, that's what.
They just said two floors, but how high is the foundation? I wonder.
Uh, typically.
Typically six, yeah.
Yeah.
But I was wondering, we were talking about how high the building can be.
Well, if it's twenty-five feet, and they're doing two floors, they're gonna be pushing it with their roof.
Yeah, unless you do it really flat. And you have to build, measure it in the middle, remember the slope.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, it's the middle of the slope, it's not the peak, it's not the height or total height.
No, we take it, middle of the building is what we've been pretty much following, I remember, right? Because a lot of these are, a lot of these are on steep slopes.
Mm-hmm, they are.
Yeah, oh, okay, oh, so it's, it's actually the, the ground line they should talk about, not the roof line.
Right, from the existing ground. Alright, so resource protection district includes areas, areas within two hundred and fifty feet horizontal distance of upland edge of freshwater lotlands with great ponds and rivers which are rated moderate or high.
Brian approved.
So that's, so northeast pond, is that considered? That's a river, right, Jen, northeast?
That's one of the things that's protected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So areas within two hundred and fifty feet of the horizontal distance, page seven of the shoreline protection, and the resource protection district. Where you go, David, with that, high-tech world you got going on over there. So resource, that's where resource protection district falls over. Do you want a copy of the shoreline?
No, I just forgot it out.
Oh, oh, oh.
Listening to everybody.
Well, except the last, last line of that raises even more confusion. Except that areas which are currently developed and areas which meet the criteria for limited commercial or general development one districts need not be included within the protection district. Is, the discount's already developed because of the subdivision?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
It's already developed, and you just found kind of a loophole that.
Resource protection. When a two-family principal structures and uses planning board, multi-use, commercial, no, 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 small, non-res. If it's in, if it's in resource protection.
Right.
If you follow the chart, David, on page ten.
Yeah, I usually do.
Yeah, if it's a principal structure, one or two-family residential, including driveways, and if it's in the resource protection area, it falls on the planning board.
There you go.
Notation nine. Single-family residential structures may be allowed by special exemption only, according to the reflections of section sixteen E.
Special exceptions.
The resource district.
Page that on, you flip faster than I do.
Thirty-three.
You flip faster than I do.
Just write it right.
So far, I'm sitting here.
Thirty-five feet height.
Three B might be tough.
Yeah, I was just looking at that.
Located outside the floodway of the hundred-year floodplain.
But we have our floodplain map, so we should be.
Yeah, so we can, once we get a survey, we can pin that.
Yeah, we'd be able to look at that.
I was gonna look at, there's a.
Wouldn't we need one, if we have the map already?
Pull up and show you.
And the basements need to be a foot above the hundred foot, although if they already put the foundation in, they should have already met that requirement.
Yeah, I mean, the septic, everything's already in there, so.
Yeah.
This is all ready, this is gonna be.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda my, this may be a question for, uh, Nicole too, Jen, know something like this?
The ground.
Is it Mike Morse, right?
Um, he's on the D P.
Accessories, total ground floor.
Because I guess my question, you know, it's an existing foundation that had been previously approved. The lots are obviously broken up in approved subdivision. But I think where it's in the resource protection district, it needs to have a shoreline application. If you go to page twelve, B. And then you go down to, uh, number one, and then you go down to the last sentence in the resource protection district.
Wait, what page?
Page twelve.
You've got a different page.
Mine doesn't.
Yeah, we got, we got different ones for it.
Yeah, because someone's done.
Keep going, we gotta go further.
On regular PC, yeah.
So it's gonna be under principal accessories, yeah, right there, okay.
So you're under one. One, one B?
Yeah.
A non, a lot of record?
Uh, I know B one, yeah, but here. Okay, I'm in the land use standards, actually, are you in the land used, right after the table?
Land used, oh.
Right after the table.
Right after the table.
Yeah, fifteen.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Fifteen B.
So page thirteen, thirteen for us.
All different accessory structures?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Then you go, in the resource protection district. Setback requirement shall be two hundred and fifty feet horizontal distance except for structures, roads, parking spaces, or other regulated objects specifically allowed in that district in which the case setback requirement specified above shall apply.
Right, which are a hundred feet back horizontal from the high water line, uh, for great ponds.
So we're in the resource protection district, which opens up in the now.
Yeah, right.
Not gonna.
You thought this was easy, huh?
I think we're gonna need a full shoreline application.
Okay.
Which is online, Jen can provide it to you, which will also require a, a site plan, yes.
Site plan, okay. Okay.
So.
And we, and we are now, we're requiring more than, I'm not wrong in my day, but we're requiring more than a hand drawn sketch. We need, we need actually surveyed, because we've gone out to the hand drawn sketches and it struggled with them, you know, and.
Yeah.
We need somebody, a professional to say, this is the high water mile.
Right, okay, okay.
And then we, we also get some homework to do, looking at where this was an approved subdivision, and there's already a structure that had a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So we got a couple of things at play here, but I, I feel we definitely need a shoreline application.
Okay.
Completely.
Yeah, it looked like that was.
Well, you need to build a permit, anyway, because that one's expired, and unless you were actually planning to build that exact structure. I don't think you want to build a nineteen eighties house.
The foundation's there, but yeah, utilizing that, uh, but right, the house would be different.
Not saying it's not buildable and, or any of that, we just, we're gonna need an application and we're gonna, we're gonna need to, once we have the application complete, we'll need to schedule a site walk. As we do for all our shoreline and stuff that moves forward. Unless we say strictly no, then, but this will need a site walk. And we're also gonna need Jen to do a little re- research for us on when this subdivision was approved, uh, was approved and. Because we may also have some legal issues there that we, you know.
Yeah, well, our, our decision is whether or not we go ahead and purchase the sales agreement and he, you know, actually do it, you know, because for us, it's a matter of dollars and cents at some point, you know, is it worth it for us that we just, you know, I can saw, I can keep his property?
Yeah.
And then somebody else did with this.
Foundation.
Yeah, and, and it looks like heck, you know, because it's beautiful development, you have a foundation sitting there. So if it's too onerous for anyone to do, I.
I don't, our shoreline application isn't, and I mean, there's, there might be, there might already be a site, you might be able to have a site plan that's already been surveyed.
Yeah, that's possible.
That, that exists.
Yeah.
And in all honesty, if it's only half acre lot, survey is not gonna be very expensive.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand, yeah, but the other, the other steps, do we continue with the purchase?
Yeah.
Or do we, you know, we, that's, we have to decide, you know, it's like.
And we'll have Jen do a little research, because we, this was an approved subdivision by Lebanon.
And that's kind of our, yeah.
Yeah, right, this is another new, another new one for us.
Yeah.
And it being presented to us and to look at like this, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we don't want you guys to have this problem, you know, for five years, ten years, you know, just.
They go.
And you guys don't get it, someone else is coming back for it.
Oh, it's different, yeah.
Yeah, it's different and it's.
That's state, right, that's state.
Yes, we're mandated, yes, and we, our, our shoreline is, basically follows the state. We have a few items in there, we, that are strict, we either have to follow the state or be stricter.
Oh, right, okay.
So it's not a, it's not anything that Lebanon decides on their own.
Right, yeah, we figure that.
We just have to enforce it.
Yes, indeterminate.
What, what, okay, so what do we do from here?
And Jen, Jen can do a little more research too, because we do have, the state will help us, like, they can guide us a little bit where this foundation was approved previously.
Oh, right, they may have.
So as far as not being built, we may be able to, say you have to follow the structure heights and stuff, but that may be all that needs to be done.
Follow their.
Okay. Yeah, I have some.
Yeah, right, so.
Is this one that we could talk to the state, or is that?
Uh, I think Jen, let Jen email the person we deal with.
Okay, good.
And tell, explain the situation, they'll get back to her with some an, some answers to give us some guidance.
Awesome.
Which will give you guidance.
Which will give you guidance.
Yes, that would help, yeah, yeah.
And they're, they're very helpful with this, and we also have a private person that helps us at times too. So, it may be that simple that where it's already been built, it's already approved, then, then it's just we need to follow the building itself and that would be it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
It may not be anything that's that difficult for you.
Okay.
I can't remember our application fee, but it's not, it's not, it's not exorbitant, the application is pretty simple.
Okay, all right, so we'll use Jen as our point first.
Yes, yeah, we use Jen for a lot of things, she's, she's our point too.
I know, I know, all right, all right, guys. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodnight, guys.
This is just one lot.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting though.
Yeah, it is, I never even knew that was up there.
Yeah, me neither.
Okay, this is part of that folder.
And then maybe as simple as harassing, I can't remember.
Very well, maybe.
It's not Michael anymore, but who my new contact is, he may say, you know.
Yeah.
Well, he can guide us, it's already got an existing foundation, now it's, we just need to conform the building heights.
That's one of those ones that common sense says it should probably, as long as, as long as the structure part means requirements, it seems to me that common sense says.
There's nothing about throwing.
But I know there's nothing about.
There is nothing about.
Especially because everything's already in place, so it kind of like scares me to do it and then be like, oh, you have to move your foundation back ten feet.
The other question is how many regulations have changed since nineteen eighty?
Don't move a plant.
None, actually, it's nineteen seventy three, I think.
I think there's been no tweaks.
We move all this, we move a plant or a tree, you're gonna replace it, sometimes, it can become erosion.
Yeah, it could be enough that it's, they didn't have to move the foundation.
No, no.
Wait, what? If you move a plant or a tree on these properties, sometimes you have to replace them.
Yeah, we have to have replanning plan, with the erosion control plan.
Yeah, and.
Oh, because you have to preserve the wildlife, they have such a swamp.
No, the runoff, mostly, you have.
Yeah, it's for erosion. There's all, the shoreline is tough.
That's why I think.
Now, I'm curious about, because.
That's where it gets a little.
Curious, because like, I have, so, like where my house is, is, you have the front of my property, and then you have like, where the, like, a swamp area is. And then you have my back acreage with all, like thirty eight years of wood down there. Now, can I fill in that swamp with gravel from my sand pit?
Where, where's your property? Where's your property, is it in the wetland breach zone?
I don't, well, so here's the thing, I live on the other side, so, little river is right here, I live, and then here's a road, I live on the other side of it. And so Sarah said that I was all set with everything that has to do with any part of the water and the land, because I'm over two hundred and fifty feet, even away from there.
Yeah, okay, you're outside of the.
But I have a swamp on the other side of me, and it's just like a little swamp that's on my property.
You can fill in Maine, is it twenty four hundred square feet, I think? There's, there's a sentimental, there's a sentimental like permit by rule that you can fill wetlands without a permit.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know.
In Maine, there's a, it's a certain amount of area, I can't remember.
Yeah, because we wanted to do.
Twenty four hundred feet sticks in my mind, and it may be, and we've had it come up in here before.
The other thing you can do is, um, I know it's in the comprehensive plan, which isn't gonna get published till June, but you can probably get, I believe there's a draft on the website, there's a cost save map of all of the identified wetlands.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
So you can.
Yeah.
Guesstimate as to whether.
Well, yeah, I guess I'm technically, like.
Because they're wetlands, if they're not on the nineteen eighty two survey, they're not wetlands.
No, technically, yeah.
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 All right.
Okay, what I, what I told them is you would, you would ask, say Brian Jeffrey, is that who you said, was that new?
Oh, Jeffrey, yeah, I told him that I can't touch.
Yeah, get, and tell them what the situation is, so we can get some guidance, and then where it's already in, and it was approved subdivision. It may be now making the building performing right to height restrictions and all that.
Right.
And we just need some, I told them we definitely just need some guidance before they go too fast.
Yeah.
And you email them back, let's get some information.
I told them back, we should pass some answers on by end of week, and I gave them confirmation, so they can peruse them by then.
That's why we keep you around, huh? All right, uh, next minutes, should we just wait till the next meeting, once you're, yeah, okay, everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
It's a good choice.
All right, on to business.
When does public participation come in?
After the other business.
Right after all the business.
No, you don't have other business.
Do I do the public participation right now?
We can, so you don't have to stick around and listen to us.
I'm fine, I've gone through ten, I've gone through ten years of your.
I forgot you were back. Please, please come up and, no, please come up and, look, introduce yourself to us and.
I'm Megan Ward, so I live in Sanford, um, I live two miles from four by four proving grounds.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know, um, so over the past two weeks, um, they've been having festivals there. And I don't know if they've been getting permits for these festivals.
Yes.
Um, but, uh, they've also had, um, they're, they've been going on till about eleven or twelve at night. And, um, they happen at, on Thursday nights as well, so, and I can hear them in Sanford. So we're having problems, obviously, and I don't know who we can talk to, um, nobody was aware that they were having a concert venue built.
There's a, they built one?
Uh, yeah, they built stadium seating.
Really?
Um, yeah.
He's like, I need to go check it out.
It looked like it was good for Dunkin' Donuts, though.
What?
Well, so they go up and they put it up and take it down.
Yeah, and there's like headphones, like so you can hear it through the headphones and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't really a planning board.
It's not their thing, it's.
Oh, it's not headphones, it's like, they're on there screaming MF'er, um, there's language coming out till eleven o'clock at night. Um, I can hear bass in my bedroom, like I teach, so I get up at five o'clock in the morning, um.
You know?
Have you talked to the state police at all?
What?
Have you talked to the state police at all?
Oh, yeah, state police are all around.
Yeah.
Um, I can hear the sirens going off too, so there's like sirens, there's, um, the, uh, I can hear, the engines don't bother me as much just because, like during the day. Or the neighbors, like I feel like a fuddy duddy, I feel like I'm an old, like I feel like I'm complaining like the old person.
I, this is probably.
I do believe that has been discussed.
This was selectmen, right?
Yeah.
I do believe it's been discussed at the, um, selectmen's meeting, and we do not have an ordinance for volume control. We ask.
There's no noise ordinance?
No, 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 but it's something that's being discussed, am I right? At, as we speak, they're still discussing it, they just haven't come up with an ordinance per se. There's another venue in town which has caused some problems, and that kind of brought this whole thing up. I know that, this was a three or four day event, oddly enough, I don't live more than, do I live a half a mile, you don't really live, Jen? I don't think I live a half a mile from four by four.
Yeah, I have to live.
I didn't hear it.
I live on Mount Hope.
I think it went in that direction, for whatever reason, I think it went.
No, I can hear him from my place.
No, you can hear him all the way.
I didn't hear, I, I.
I hear everything, I, it, it's like, I thought my neighbors were having a party.
No, I live a mile away, I hear it too.
On two oh two, I did not hear.
I can hear down where I live.
I think it's terrain, it just.
It's just odd.
It's almost terrain, yeah.
I think it's.
We never came in front of planning board, right? We never, no, that was before, because we never had a, uh.
Well, that's when I went back.
Site plan ordinance, there was never an ordinance till just the last year in Lebanon, so it would have never come in front of us or anything.
Uh.
So it would have strictly been code in the selectmen, right?
Right, so they have to apply for a special amusement permit and whatever, so they have to go.
Every ti, every time. Every time, is that correct?
Yes, yes, so you have to do that every time and, um, have that approved.
Thank you.
You, you've emailed me, right?
No.
No, you haven't, okay, somebody else emailed me about noise ordinance.
No.
Okay.
The whole town is talking about noise ordinance, and it's like, there is none, people, right, so.
Well, it's concerning, because I think there's no cops and now no, no fire, because, you know, all you have to do is pay sixty bucks. And you can camp there for the whole weekend.
Okay.
And like, there's pictures, because I've been checking out their Facebook, like they just dump stuff and are.
It's unfortunate.
It's, um, eh, eh, from some of the reviews, apparently, they said ten thousand people went there over Labor Day.
Yes.
I don't believe that, I always cut things in half, my life, a third.
I don't think so.
But if there were even like two thousand people there.
I'd be surprised.
Which I was still shocked at, right, I would be shocked, but I mean, that's a, that's a ton of people there, there's.
Well, we have occupancy levels set at the campground and, and at the event license, so there are license for a certain number of people, I don't know what it is.
I mean, it's over forty.
Right, but I was at the selectmen's meetings when they discussed.
I, I think they do it on a, uh, when they're asking for the permits, on each permit is at its own.
Limit.
Yeah, well, whatever they're asking for is the one, it's, it's not one big thing fills it all, they say we went have a weekend of this or that, um.
I think it's very loosey goosey, um, over there, eh, there's some people that have a great time, and then there's some people that, um.
Take advantage of the situation.
Take advantage of the situation, for instance, there was somebody who got arrested yesterday on his ATV. With a half a pound of weed and like sixty capsules, driving like.
That wasn't David, okay?
No, that was somebody else.
I think it was.
I know as far as the noise goes, I know.
Somebody bailed your off time on a meeting day, but.
Now, was looking to.
Just, just in time.
Into creating one for the town, but he said that we should, we may be able to fall under the state because we don't have one, so I know that he had mentioned that because we were having issue about noise on another, in another part of town.
Mm-hmm.
So, but there isn't anything as far as specifically for Lebanon in place as of yet.
It was more for next summer, really, was what it was coming to, like what's gonna happen every, you know, every week next summer, if we're having festivals.
Well, even if we did something, even if it's something now, it couldn't be on the ballot before.
I mean, I, I don't.
That's why I was like, I, and I, that's why I'm so prepared right now, because.
Yeah, it is, but there's a new.
I said you guys had a meeting.
That was the right side.
Right, and I didn't realize we had a meeting until an hour before the meeting, and I was like, I gotta go.
Big interment thing, something like that, and.
Okay, so when is the next meeting of select?
Thursday.
There's two of them, it's a partnership.
This Thursday, at sex.
At, are there six or?
At five.
Five thirty.
Five thirty here.
Yeah, they're a weird time.
Okay, and I, this is when I come and I can be like, pot, and I don't really care, so I feel like I'm the old person.
Yeah.
She should be, if, she can be put on the agenda if she asks, correct?
She'd have to talk to Lynn, but I mean, you can.
I can email.
Public participation, just like you are now, so.
Okay. Or you can go on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whichever your choices, if you called, you could ask them how to get on the agenda, and it puts you in through to Lynn, if that's what you choose, whatever you choose to do.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks for letting me sit here.
I've learned a lot, I've learned a lot.
Sorry, I don't remember anything you learned from us.
I learned, I learned a ton, I'm very excited about Dunkin' Donuts and.
Yeah, sorry, no one could help you.
Right, yeah, so, thank you very much for letting me talk, uh, and I'll probably not see any of you guys Thursday, but I'll be here Thursday.
Okay, bye. Take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, so any other business?
I have a question on the other business.
Yeah.
Let it be known that Betty Harris Howard is not objection, doesn't have an objection to anyone helping drug addicts, Deborah. Um, we're having things come into town and everyone's shocked, surprised, when it happens. What can, is there anything we as a board or, I mean, you turn around and something's in town and you have no clue what it is or how it is. You were at the meeting, you know what's gonna happen.
Who you're talking about, yeah.
I don't care, I care what comes into town, of course I do, but what really matters is that what comes into town is legitimate and good. Is there any, we don't have anything that says that a business can't come into town and just open up, right? Or do we?
But.
I'm looking into this whole situation.
You are.
Because we have site plan, but I mean, we only, we have site plan, subdivision, and shoreline.
Change of use, we have change of use.
Yeah.
We also have a business registration, but that doesn't fall in.
That doesn't, that doesn't, and that doesn't do, that doesn't, that, that doesn't do anything.
Yeah, I'm talking about planning board. Yeah, we, we only have.
We do change of use, correct?
Yes, from non-residential to commercial.
So if you had a commercial, but if you had a commercial building and it changed use, uh, it, if it, well, one business to another would not involve us.
Well, that's not.
It may, it may not.
No, right, because remember when the tax shop changed to the flea market?
I do.
We looked at it and we determined that wasn't a significant change of use because it was retail to retail.
That's right.
It didn't fall into planning board review, but they did bring it in front of us, which is what my understanding the site plan ordinance should entail, right? But they did bring it in front of us, which is what my understanding the site plan ordinance should entail, right? That picks up commercial, so if it is a change of use, it should at least come in front of us to determine if, if site plan review is needed.
I, I'm just kind of uneasy about different things that just come in and pop up.
Right.
And we sit here and go, oh, that's opening up.
But that was why at minors, Fresh Vibes was able to go in, because it wasn't a change of use, right?
Yeah, right.
No, it was a restaurant to a restaurant, so it never came in front of us.
And we have now a building that apparently had no tenant, or I don't know if it ever did. It's now becoming a doctor's office.
Originally built for.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, what was the original intent of the building?
Your house. You're looking into it.
Oh, so it was so hoped for.
Well, I would say that's a significant, if you're going from a grow house to a.
Oh, it was a grow house.
Practitioner, that's a significant change of use.
Supposed to be from what I understand.
To stay, to begin with.
That was a grow house?
No, that's too fancy to be a grow house, you need a.
I mean, basically, if it doesn't fall into what we have, right? It's a nice looking building. It doesn't have to come in front of us.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not judging what's going in, I do like to know that people that come into town are reputable people.
We're not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
Well, the answer, the other question with that particular case is why did they pull the permits? This is a new ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I, don't they have to pull permits? I don't know.
Question from.
There's a lot of questions.
Dana.
It's a question.
Well, I mean.
What? Yeah, Dana.
Do I need to be recognized?
We'll recognize.
We'll recognize you right now.
We know you.
You can step up, say what you get to say.
Uh, I think that it was a car and truck parts place.
Oh, maybe.
Many years ago.
May.
And then apparently turned into a grow house and a bad way.
Really?
A music venue.
Yes, I, I know for a fact, I can hear it from my house.
A music venue?
Music venue?
Wait a minute, what are you talking about? We just heard about the same place.
I don't know, I, I know where, I know what Dana.
Talking about the Suboxadone Clinic.
Yeah, where's this? I know what Dana, I, I know what Dana's talking about, because it's just.
I'm talking about the clinic.
Where I live.
Which is right across the street from, um.
The rental place, something like rental.
It's a doctors, it's supposed to be a doctor.
They had the sign out there saying, seeing patients, September fifth.
I go by in the dark all the time.
My concern is not what they're doing, let's make that clear, I wanna help drug addicts. My concern is, are these reputable people that are going in there? I have no clue.
Right.
And is, and how can we, is there any permit or anything they get, or does the state?
Well, he has to be a doctor.
Well, that doesn't, I've been in medicine for many years and that means nothing.
The answer is, they have to follow our procedures, and if they don't, there are repercussions, it's not following procedures.
Is do we have procedures?
We do now.
Do we?
Well, we have a change of use plan. If they did any.
What's ever.
But was it, was it put in as general use? Because if it was, then you could have a practitioner come in there. Or this is also being, that somebody owns the building and this is being. Rented out.
Yeah.
For. Right, and that's, and that's why I was thinking general business. There's a lot of different variables to.
In Lebanon, doesn't matter, we don't have zoning, so what is, what is general business?
That's exactly.
Anything you want.
But the other things are, if they did any modifications, if they did some electrical work, they needed to pull a permit.
Absolutely. But it does just.
Doesn't have anything to do with us right now.
No.
Right, but that's not.
No, but it, so those are the things that would.
But this is where code, this is where code should come in, right, when they come to code to get a permit for something.
Mm-hmm.
Then code would say you need to go to site plan review.
And at that point, at least as a planning board.
At the time, so.
Right.
As a planning board, I think it's good if we know what's coming into town.
Yeah.
And just have a clue. You guys came twice.
Yeah, you didn't have to, but you did.
Yeah.
I think it's just, if we're planning, if we're planning the town, so to speak, we should at least know what's coming in.
Well, unlike we decided the last meeting not to have a blanket statement that if you had an in-home daycare and in-home business, we didn't need to see it.
Because it could blow in our faces.
Because they could have something different in a different call, which we have no problem with daycares.
Right, right, but we need to see it and know what's.
But we also didn't come up with a solid definition of what it.
Kind of answers my question, is that we should have, we should know.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would think so.
You agree? So anytime anybody's in business, let us know, just do this text.
I'm not sure there's a fail-safe mechanism that does accomplish that, I think you're right.
Yeah, well, yeah, not a, not a, not a setting.
Yeah.
We, we need that comprehensive plan. Yeah.
But that won't do that either.
That's not doing it.
Plan is just recommendations.
It's a start, yeah.
It's recommendations.
But it's the only, it's the only way to get zoning though, right, is if we gotta have a comprehensive.
But it's not in there?
It's not in there.
It's not in the, the one presently, because people didn't want it, I've heard.
Very clear that they do not want zoning, period, end of statement.
That was my understatement.
Until something goes next year. So I guess, yeah, and then they.
So is there anything else going in town?
Oh, we had a pretty good list tonight.
We certainly did, I mean, I can see our little town growing.
Yeah.
We'd like to get a bank in.
Oh, perfect.
That's what I was hoping, I need an ATM close by.
Hey, well, that's a thought.
I think that every time, I'm like, oh, I really need to get that twenty dollars for calling to bring to school for books.
It would be, you know, it would be a great thing.
You know, that, that kinda takes advantage of the fact that we're a throughway.
Yeah.
High traffic street banks are a great place for, you know, people going back, and there's not many businesses that drive bys.
You should tell your local bank, whoever you bank with, seven thousand people.
I keep playing to my shit, I'm gonna need a physical therapist.
Honestly, they will.